Okay. 533, this is to call to order the October 2023 Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for starters, I'd like to introduce our group here. My name is Hal Hutchinson. I'm the Planning and Zoning Chairman, I guess it is. On the far end of the table, to my right, is Shelby, you have to help me with your last name, Trottier, Trottier with the Planning and Zoning staff. Next to her is Kristi Turner, the Planning and Zoning Director. My immediate, next is Jared Holbrook with the County Attorney's Office. To my immediate right is Robert Grant, Commissioner. To my far left, well, to my left is Ray Schulty, Commissioner, and following us on Zoom is Commissioner Chad McNutt. And I need to make everyone aware, when you come speak to the Commissioners, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. And we've got a few people in the audience here tonight. If we could limit our, if we could limit our information that you provide to us to three minutes would be appreciated. We want to get out of here before it's too late. So, three minutes. And what am I missing, Kristi? I think that's it. Okay. So, next order of business is consideration of the minutes from September 12th, 2023. Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes from September 23 meeting. I approve for a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes from last month or approved? So, the first order of business is consideration of conditional use permit 21-2, and that was tabled in the year 2021. It's come back around, and the first order of business is considering untabling the item. So, Chair would entertain a motion to bring conditional use permit 21-002 back before the body.
I move that we move CUP 21-002 back to the table, back from the table.
What do you think, Ray? Or Chad?
I second that motion.
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
That's a, that's four against, Chad?
That is four, excuse me. That is four, excuse me. That is an aye.
Okay. So, CUP 21-002 is off the table, and the business tonight is a request by Joe Hutchinson for approval of a conditional use permit for a parcel of approximately 5.65 acres in the Light Industrial Zoning District. The parcel is located at 6920 Cactus Lane. Property is currently accessed from Six Mile Road. Kristi, may we have a staff report, please?
All right. As stated, this is a conditional use permit for a project that was brought in front of the Planning and Zoning Board on April 13th, 2021. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for the large-scale campground on 5.65 acres in Light Industrial. The property is east of the airport on the south side of West Yellowstone Highway, and it's accessed off of the highway by Six Mile Road. The minimum lot size for Light Industrial is two acres without public water and sewer and 1.5, or 1/2 acre with public water and sewer. The property is currently vacant pending the approval of this conditional use permit. All adjacent land uses are Light Industrial. So, as I stated, originally, this was presented to the Planning and Zoning on April 13th. It was tabled indefinitely. The one item to note is that as this application was received and the case tabled prior to December 20th of 2022, all of the considerations for approval or denial will utilize the 2000 zoning resolution that was in effect at the time of the application. So, before I move on to address the items that were on the list from the last Planning and Zoning, I just, I'm going to go back one. So, this is what the property looked like back in 2019 to 2020. This is what the property looks like today. They've done a lot of cleanup in that area, and this is what it looks like within the lot. So, the questions from April 13th that the Commission had at that meeting was in regards to the Casper-Alcova Irrigation District easement. That easement runs behind the property, and at the time, there was some discussion about utilizing access over that easement, but that is no longer within the scope of the plan, and so it's no longer a consideration. The other item was Cactus Road right-of-way and maintenance. So, the applicant is going to maintain the portion of Cactus Road that provides access to his parcel. Ingress and egress of the campground is supported by Cactus Lane exiting onto Six Mile. The applicant is still working with the adjacent property owner on the east. So, over here on the east side, it is Oil-Filled Center Road. That is a private road, and they would need to go ahead and establish permitted access to use that in case of any emergency so that they would have two routes of exit from the campground to the highway. In regards to any items with the county health department that were in question, he is still working with the health department in regards to their campground requirements. The meeting, the topic at that meeting was the concern of the sewer services on site. Since that time, the applicant has worked with Vista West, West Gate Park ISD, to provide sewer and water services to the campground. They have supported the applicant's application as well through the WDEQ. So, the remaining concerns from the health department will be the distance between sites, trash disposal, and other items pertaining to the campground design. And that kind of wraps up the outstanding questions that the Commission had to the applicant in 2021. Moving forward for the criteria approval, there are, the first one is will granting the conditional use permit contribute to an overburdening of county services? This application has been sent to Natrona County Fire, Natrona County Road and Bridge, Casper, Natrona County Health Department, Casper, Natrona County International Airport as it is within their irrigation easements. The fire department did not respond with any comments. Road and Bridge reviewed the traffic study that was prepared and agrees with the findings that the traffic will not be a problem. None of the interior roadways are county-maintained with the exception of Six Mile and 6WN, and Road and Bridge has no areas of concern. The health department has been in communication with the applicant regarding their campground requirements, and at the time in the report, I had not received any comment from the health department, but you will find next to you, there is a letter from the health department in regards to this stating that there is no opposition to this application, but that the applicant will still be required to meet those campground requirements, speaking of trash, the distance between sites, et cetera. The airport did not respond, had not responded with any comments, and he sent me an email the other day saying that he has no comments for this, no opposition. The WDEQ acknowledges that the permit is in review, but has not issued official approval at the time of this response. And as we know, with the DEQ, sometimes it can be a chicken-and-egg scenario to, before they give their complete approval, they want to know that the county has given some sense of approval to the project so that with the last conditional use permit that included the DEQ, we required that that be provided before they begin any operations. The second requirement is will granting the conditional use permit cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems? We've already discussed the traffic from Road and Bridge. There are no perceived environmental problems that have been flagged through the WDEQ, and it is upon them to help mitigate any of those. And the third is will granting the conditional use permit impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? The campground in this area will not necessarily impair the use of the adjacent properties, but the presence of a campground may alter the character of the neighborhood. The surrounding businesses are all Light Industrial. The campground may change the character, but it will not have a negative impact on the surrounding areas. Will granting the conditional use permit detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare? Again, with the applicant working with the DEQ for the permit, once it receives that, this requirement will be met. As of the date of the staff report, there had been no written comments received. Staff sent notices to 33 neighbors in the area. Recommendations is the Planning and Zoning Commission may approve the requested conditional use permit after consideration and public testimony and the facts of the case as presented during the public hearing. If all the minimum regulation standards of the 2000 zoning code are satisfied and after consideration of any relevant factors and upon finding that the request is in keeping with the four required findings listed in Chapter 11, Section 2D of the 2000 zoning resolution of Natrona County. Should the Planning and Zoning Commission vote approval of the requested conditional use permit, staff recommends the inclusion of three conditions that were listed below. Those conditions are stated as the approval and issuance of a permit from the DEQ prior to any operations for the campground, formal approval of the campground design by the Natrona County Health Department, and an emergency traffic plan with acknowledgement of owners' managers of Oil-Filled Center Road, which is identified as private, that the use of the portion of this road between Cactus Lane and highway is granted for the evacuation or emergency service access. And I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Turner?
Yes, I have a question. Could you go back, yeah, about, can you tell me where the public road ends and it becomes private?
The Cactus Lane continues all the way through to Oil-Filled Center Road. It is at Oil-Filled Center Road that I believe it turns private.
Well, that, Cactus Lane is public, but it dead-ends onto a private. I mean, it doesn't dead-end, you can drive through it, but it, so that's the only, that's the second exit from that property. Cactus Lane onto the Oil Field, whatever, Oil Field Center Road. And maybe you said this and I didn't catch it, but is there, what type of action does that owner have to take to ensure that there's always going to be access to that road?
So, Mr. Chair, that's a, that's a good question. Generally, what happens between private parties is an easement is granted for the use of the road, and so that would be what we would look for.
Is that in the recommendation as for approval? So, they would have to have an easement to get the conditional use permit?
So, the third condition is that they come up with an acknowledgement from those owners that in the case of an emergency, that they would be able to utilize that road.
So, one other question. Acknowledgement, is that, does that imply easement? Or would, I'm not, acknowledgement, is that, that doesn't quite seem formal, but...
So, Mr. Chair, that acknowledgement would come as either an easement or a formal agreement between the two parties.
Thank you.
Kristi, for the refreshing memory, going back to 2021, the first order of business back then was to consider rezoning, if I recall correctly.
Yes, sir.
And that rezoning was denied, as I recall?
Yes, sir.
What was the rezoning, what was the idea? Do you recall?
So, at the time of the application and the 2000 zoning resolution, campgrounds were not listed as a permitted use in Light Industrial. So, they were attempting to change the zoning from Light Industrial to a zone that would facilitate a campground. So, at that time, it was suggested that they apply for the conditional use permit as a similar use. So, it's one of the, one of the caveats in a permitted uses is there's a list of all the permitted uses that you have at that time, and then there's a list of conditional uses that you can apply for, and then there are similar, and I can't, forgive me, I cannot remember the exact statement, but you can, if it's not necessarily listed on there, if it is similar to some of those uses, you can add it to the conditional use permit through this process.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Kristi. At this time, before the public hearing is kicked off, if the applicant is in the audience, if you'd like to come up and tell us your, your plan.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm Joe Hutchinson. This is Jason Knopf. He's, oh, I'm sorry, 1200 Donegal, Casper, Wyoming, 8669. I'm Joe Hutchinson. This is Jason Knopf. I've been working on the project a long time, and Jason can answer most of the questions for you unless you had anything specific for me.
Okay. So, what we heard from staff is actually covering everything that we need to know?
Yeah. I think, I think Kristi did a great job on breaking it all down.
The, just to clarify, the water is owned by a different district, and the sewer is owned by a different district. She mentioned they were all on one. One's Vista West Sewer, and one's Vista West Water. And then there should be a letter of approval from each one of those districts as well. So, so the water and sewer is going to be turned over to those two entities in Cactus Lane, but the water and sewer and the campgrounds are going to then be owned by the applicant, but they all have to meet DEQ and health standards.
Questions for the applicant? So, a couple of questions I have. I remember reading somewhere, and I don't know if it was back in 2021 I'm remembering, but there was a commitment made to improve Cactus Lane in front of the property. Does that ring a bell?
We've never actually committed to doing it. I know that was going to be a question at this particular hearing. The question was, you know, who owns what? So, the county owns Cactus Lane right up to the applicant's property line, and then from there, it's private with a public access granted to the land. It's a 60-foot-wide easement access on the plat. So, the county owns it. So, that's why the discussion never finished at that time. I, and I did not attend that meeting, I apologize. I was not at that meeting, but I believe that was why the questions were coming up, was who owned what and how much of Cactus Lane and where. I think at the time, the county road gentleman believed he owned, or the county owned all the way through.
So, the question is, are there plans to improve the road?
So, right now, we're going to just put it as back as either a mill, milling, mill-talings, or gravel, or some sort of man-chloride-type poback maintain. Right now, the campground's really going to be the only one other than, you know, the residents on the corner. They all kind of chip in and maintain it now.
How many sites are we talking about?
Right now, I think I've listed, I sent her a new map, and I printed it up. I have 45 counted out. The county health does want to put in additional garbage locations, so we might eliminate a few spots for... So, right now, 45.
Which could potentially be, if you count 10 trips a day, could be 450 trips a day, right? 450 trips a day?
Yeah, I guess it's possible. I don't know if the traffic study pulled that individually, each one out, or how they went about looking at the traffic counts on that study.
So, my concern is that's a lot of, that's a lot of traffic on a dirt road, and mill-talings will help, but I'm just registering this for later when we have discussion, so be aware. I guess the thing that strikes me as different, when we look at this application, is it is all industrial, all the way around your place, with the exception of one residential place right there on the corner of Six Mile and Cactus Lane. It's different that we're going to have 100 people potentially living in there.
I think it's pretty similar to what the airport has out there, all industrial with a campground in the middle of it, and it's full, seems to do very well.
And the way we laid this out is to utilize the mature trees and not go in and mow this down and make it a parking lot like the one out at Alcova. I mean, it's just a lay-down yard. So, we wanted to give it some sort of a screening, utilize the mature trees, and that's why you see kind of the layout and the traffic flow oriented the way you do on a site plan.
Okay. Thank you.
The, and DEQ has approved it. They've sent all the paperwork to Cheyenne, so we're expecting to see that permit within the next couple of weeks.
You have an email or something, you say they approved it. Do you have an email saying it's approved, or what do you have?
I do, I don't have it with me. I can send you the email.
Is that what you have, though?
Yes, and he needed, the last thing I gave the county stamped, so I stamped it, and he sent everything to Cheyenne, so.
Okay.
We're expecting to see that pretty, pretty soon, as far as that goes.
You seen that, Kristi?
Mr. Chair, the last communication I have with DEQ was that they did have all the permit information, but that they could not give me a timeline about the approval.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. You guys might want to stay put for a minute. We're going to have a public hearing, and I'm sure you're going to want to...
Oh, yeah, we'll step aside.
Well, you can, you can be the first up.
Anything before we get started with the public hearing?
All right. This time we're calling to order a public hearing for the consideration of conditional use permit. CU, CUP 21-002. And with that, all who would like to speak in favor of the application, would you please come forward?
Yeah, go ahead and tell them what you're doing, why you're in favor for this, and what your plan is.
Hi, Joe. Joseph Hutchinson, 1200 Donegal. You know, I think this is going to fit in real well, and there's other campgrounds, like the one out at the airport, that is full, and it's in an industrial area. You know, in the day, you know, there's a little bit of activity out there. It's actually fairly quiet, quieter than you would expect, and in the evening, it's dead quiet out there. It's actually a pretty nice area. I, I think it'll work real well.
So, a question I meant to ask you earlier, what are, what are going to be the, what are going to be the rules as far as how long can you camp?
Like, can you set any bylaws?
You know, we, I haven't. I would like to set it up more for people coming into town to work. They're getting ready, I believe that Solaris project is set to start in 2024, and there's other, you know, things that, and I would like to set it up for people to come in, use their camper to, they, however long for jobs and that.
So, it could be, it could be months or even longer?
It could be.
Okay.
I'm not really looking at a, somebody coming to town wanting to go swim in a pool, and it's not a vacation spot. It's more of an RV park for people coming to town to work, and, and that's kind of the people I want to orient it towards.
Well, you have someone on site watching the place 24/7?
Yeah, I'll have an attendant there, maybe not 24/7. I'll have an attendant there all during the day, and then maybe somebody that I trust, we'll see after people move in, you know, that I can have as kind of a, you know, take care of things if somebody's not around, like, I guess you would say a camp tender, but just somebody that I trust that, you know, is there.
Will there be lighting? Will there be street lighting?
Yes. Around the trash cans, we're going to have lighting and kind of up front where you pull in. Around the, we're going to try and not have a lot of lighting around the campers where you're sleeping, but yeah, up front and that area on the roads and stuff, lighting, but try to go minimal in the back, so it's not like sleeping in Walmart parking lot.
Okay.
The trash container sites, I think are required to be lit, but we are lighting them anyways so that they can, so, and we're going to add, you know, add additional trash cans. But yes, there'll be minimal lighting, more for the entrance, right now is the way we have it laid out, and around the trash containers.
No mobile homes, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and if someone comes out there with their RV and wants to put skirting around to be there for, camp out for a year, how does that work?
Well, that's not my plan. You know, I've been to other RV parks that, you know, if people are camping there in the winter time, even if they're going to stay a month, I have seen them whip out the skirting because it's just the only way to keep them from freezing up, but I don't really have a plan on people moving in there and staying, you know, that's their home forever.
Okay. Thank you. Jason Canoe, 4760 Ross Ridge Road. Jason Canoe, 4760 Ross Ridge Road.
I agree with Joe. I think this fits the area fairly well, just being in the neighborhood and talking to it. I wouldn't impose with that. I do not attend KOAs myself, so I can't judge it all in that opinion. The other reason why strongly for the project is it's going to really dramatically improve this area. We did look at using septic systems for this campground, and you can't. The soils are awful. It really doesn't let you take a lot of water at all. Tuboscope across the street has issues with their septic system. They're pretty excited about the project because they want to tie into the sewer line as well, once we build the project, because Joe's upfronting the cost of putting the public utility in. So, all of the other individuals are actually for the project, because they all want to tie into the sewer, sewer line. Everyone has issues out there. So, I do believe that this project will spur a little bit of growth and development in that area as well. There's quite a few lots on CBS Court that are kind of waiting for something to allow them to develop those lots. But other than that, that's all I have to say for that project.
Questions? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Absolutely.
So, my name's Leah Smith. I work at the Casper, Nautrona County Health Department. I'm a health inspector, and I'm working with them on getting this campground approved. We have specific regulations for campgrounds. And I know Mr. Hutchinson's idea is to let them stay for long periods of time. Our regulation is limited to 30 days. They also have to all have all independent campers, because they don't have the structure for outbuildings, so that there can be no tents, no trailers that don't have, you know, their own hookups for water and sewer. So, it's going to be limited on the types of people that can stay there. So, there's pretty specific regulations. I think I've sent them to Kristi before, but that they will have to follow to be able to get their license. So, that hopefully clarifies a little bit of some of the questions that you've been having about the campground. Do you have any more that I might be able to?
Who polices that?
Pardon me?
Who polices that 30-day?
Well, that's our problem. We don't have, we don't have badges. We don't have any way, I mean, we tell them they can't do that, and it's one of those problems. I mean, we've worked with the county before on nuisance ordinances, and they've been able to help us out in some of those cases. But we really don't have any teeth in our regulations. We say 30 days, and if somebody wants to stay for their lifetime, we can say you can't do that, but that's.
Or they can move to the next site, start over again, right?
Pardon me?
Or they can move to the next site and start up.
Potentially. I mean, that's what people do in the big horns and every place else, they just move from one campground to another. But, so that's, that's kind of part of the dilemma, because we do have campgrounds here in Nautrona County that you have people basically living there for longer periods of time than what campground should be. And the county has their own campgrounds, and I think they have the same problems with that from time to time. So, I don't know what the answer to that is. I wish we had a better way of making sure that that was able to be enforced, but we don't have enforcement capabilities on our own.
Okay. As I understand from this letter that we got as we sat down, you guys are, you guys are happy with everything you've seen, other than the trash containers and?
Yeah, there's some things they need to add to the design and stuff, but it's, I mean, it, all we do is we make them follow our regulations. We don't really have anything to do with what the county itself is requiring and the conditional use permits and that. We just try to work with Kristi and kind of give them the feedback of what they'll have to do to get licensed, because we're the ones that license them.
Questions for Ms. Smith? Thank you for the clarification. You're welcome. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of? Would you please come forward? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to conditional use permit 21-002? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to it? Seeing none. That concludes the public hearing on the, on the matter. Discussion? Also entertain a motion. By the way, there's a sample motion in the, in the packet. Mr. Grant?
I can't think of any. I think they've improved the property out there quite a bit.
Okay.
I work right next to that, and it's, it looks good. It looks a much better than it did five years ago.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I guess my only question is that road that leads into that property is not very well maintained. And was that clarified, or did I miss that? Because that, that road's rough, really rough. It's, it just doesn't seem like people are going to drive on that every day and be happy with it.
It's not maintained.
Share your concern. I share your concern, especially with the added traffic that we were talking about the number of trips. So, if you wish to, if you would be in favor of it, and there were three elements that, considerations that staff had proposed, you might want to consider making that a fourth.
Mr. Chair, what would that recommendation be?
I would say that the applicant shall be responsible for improving Cactus Lane in a manner acceptable to staff, which may include road and rail tailings, magnesium chloride application. Or even paving, or even asphalt paving. I will say that I have been out there. The road's actually better than many, really county. So, kind of got a leg up, at least yesterday. Kristi?
Mr. Chair, if you wanted to add that condition to that, I would put it to the, not just to the satisfaction of staff, but to include road and bridge.
Okay, good idea.
And, Mr. Chair, for clarification, that, that would be from Six Mile Road up and to the east boundary of that property? That seems like where the oil starts. Seems like the oil road starts on the east side of that boundary.
What I had seen, I'm trying to break through the cobwebs from 2021. There's been a lot going on since then. But I do recall something about the frontage on the road being improved. Cactus Lane from Six Mile Road to the, to the property, it might be an onerous condition on a applicant to, to basically, that'd be, looks like over twice what they would have to improve to do that, but certainly in front of their, you know, in front of their property, I think that would be fair game.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand the concern with the, with the dust and just the condition of the road. Is that a concern for the tenants or the folks that are, that are staying at the RV park? Or is it, is it a concern with the surrounding businesses? I don't have the map in front of me, but is it with that, that one prop, that one house that you mentioned that's on the corner? I'm just trying to understand the concern with the, with the dust or with the condition of the road.
Sorry, I think that was your question, if you wish to.
So, Chad, if the question is, what is my concern? I'm just, my concern when I drive around that property is when you, when you turn off Six Mile Road and turn east on Cactus Lane, it's, it's a pretty washboard road. It's pretty rough. And I just wonder what, if there are 45 tenants out there driving back and forth, or they're going to have to access a private road. And I don't know that that seems like a reasonable alternative, but maybe it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a.
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a good, you know, good solution here. I'm just trying to think about, you know, if I'm, if I'm staying in a place like that and the road is, you know, not great, you know, I might take that into consideration. I imagine the, the folks that are, that might be staying there, you know, may or may not, you know, care too much about having the road washed out. But I can certainly understand the concern about, you know, maintaining it long term.
I just, yeah, I'm.
I just, yeah, I'm kind of thinking, you know, is this an undue burden that we're asking these folks to take on here, given the length of the road? It's not just in front of their, their place. So, yeah, I, I don't know. I live off a dirt road myself, and it's just part of it. Sometimes it's good and sometimes it's not. You know, I would imagine if they want to keep, keep clients coming, they'll have to maintain it. I just don't know that it's something that we, we should require, is, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Question for staff. Did I understand Cactus Lane is, is a county road between Six Mile and the property? Did I hear you say that?
So, Mr. Chair, I believe that the ownership for the first section of Cactus Road is county, and at the beginning of the campground is where it transitions to private but open to public use.
So, I know Road and Bridge has more than enough to do, but if that indeed is the case, then the tenants or the owner could always appeal to the county to go out there and blade the road occasionally.
And, Mr. Chair, Road and Bridge did not have any opposition to the campground being put there in their response.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion for consideration.
I note that the Planning and Zoning Commission has considered all the relevant factors, including but not limited to those set forth in the 2000 zoning resolution of Nautrona County, and find that the conditional use permit meets the four findings required by Chapter 6, Section 2D. On that basis, I move to approve CUP 22-4 with the three conditions, the three conditions listed under recommendation, under recommendations, sorry, section of the staff report with a do-pass recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Point of clarification, is that CUP, is it, should it be 22, 21-002?
I think it was supposed to be, yeah. I'm just reading it off.
So, conditional use permit 21-002. Okay. Any consideration of the special, oh, you got three conditions. Any, any, anything about the road?
Should we add something about?
If you wish.
Let's add one semi-maintain the road according to Road and Bridge. Would that be?
And just for the frontage of their property?
I think that would be a good idea. For just in front of their property.
Okay. To include road and rail tailings, mag chloride application consistent with Road and Bridge approval. Okay. So, we have, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of conditional use permit, the motion for conditional use permit 21-002, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chad, there we go. Okay, all four were, one, two, three, all four were for? No, no one against, so therefore, we send a do-pass recommendation to the county commissioners for their consideration that, Kristi, I don't know when their, when their commission meeting is for this item.
This commission meeting is November 7.
Okay. So, where did they go? Oh, there they are on the back. Hide now. Okay. You're, you're approved and good luck. Next on the agenda this evening is consideration of MS 23-3, a request by Carl and Vicky Nelson for approval of a vacation and replat for the CV Nelson Edition, a major subdivision consisting of two lots on a parcel of approximately 2.2 acres in the urban residential zoning district, parcel located at Lot 10, Westland Park Number 2, and Lot 2, Bunner Simple Subdivision. The property is currently accessed from Cabin Creek Road. Kristi, may we have a staff report, please?
As stated, this is case number MS 23-3 with Carl and Vicky Nelson, revocable trust as the applicant for the CV Nelson Edition Major Subdivision. That is in a request for approval of a vacation and replat of the two lots on a parcel of approximately 2.2 acres in urban residential zoning district. The property is located on the south side of State Highway 220, south of intersection of Highway 220 and Cabin Creek Road, 575 feet west of Highway 220 and the Robinson Road interchange. The current address on Lot 1 is 4260 Cabin Creek Road. Again, it is urban residential. The minimum lot size in that area is 9,000 square feet with public sewer and two acres with a private sewer or septic. The property is currently subdivided, but the lots are in two different subdivisions. Proposed Lot 1 is currently Lot 10 of Westland Park Number 2, and proposed Lot 2 is currently Lot 2 of Bunner Simple. Proposed Lot 1 currently has a shop on the property. Lot 2 is undeveloped. So, to give you guys a little bit of background before we begin, and this is the proposed subdivision. This is the original Westland Park Number 2 subdivision as platted in the 70s. We'll zoom in. These are the two original lots from the Westland Park. So, in the orange is Lot 10, and the turquoise is Lot 25. In 2012, Lot 25 was replatted, was vacated and replatted as Bunner Simple Subdivision. From looking at the background and the plat, it appears this subdivision was created in order to address an encroachment from offense. So, Lot 2 in Bunner is our proposed Lot 2 in CV Nelson. Additionally, there was, go back. So, you see the, the property to the north of Bunner Lot 2, which was Bunner Lot 1. And then again, in 2014, was vacated and replatted. and then again in 2014 was vacated and replatted as Zoe Simple subdivision. Again, it appears that there may have been an issue with offense. So, those are the actions and subdivisions that have happened within this direct area that we are discussing tonight. So, Lot 10 in this picture is our proposed Lot One, and the Zoe Simple subdivision is up to the north, and then Bunner Lot Two is our second lot in tonight's subdivision. The intended subdivision looks like this once you break it out into, to ArcMap, with Lot One extending all the way to the south, and Lot Two, um, moving that, moving that east-west dividing line to become a north-south dividing line. The curve of the line follows along the creek. So, that's why it has a strange shape. Oops. Then moving forward, um, we will come back to this, but I wanted you to see, this is as mapped, the ISDs in that area. So, Lot One lands in Skyline Ranches ISD, and Lot Two is currently within the Westland So, we have nine criteria for a subdivision. And previously, if you notice, those, those two other subdivisions that happened were what we call a minor boundary adjustment, where, um, the orientation of the lines don't necessarily change, but we can utilize Chapter Eight, Section Two, Number C, in order to have an administrative approval of those simple items when there's an encroachment from offense, et cetera. So, neither, neither of those subdivisions were presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They were done within the administrative duties of the planning office. So, going, moving forward into our standards for a major, as this doesn't necessarily qualify as just a minor boundary adjustment, the criteria is, is going to be a major because it's a division of land into two or more parcels of 140 acres of less and not classified as a simple subdivision. A simple subdivision is defined as the division of one parcel into two lots that has not been previously subdivided. So, Section Five goes over the criteria of approval for this, and the subdivision is consistent with the Neutona County Development Plan and the Neutona County Zoning Resolution. The proposed CV Nelson addition major subdivision lot dimensions are in compliance with the 2022 zoning resolution. The zoning is urban residential, and again, as stated before, it's 900 square feet minimum when connected to public water and sewer. So, these are connected to ISDs, so that is our minimum requirement. The intended purpose of urban residential is to establish and protect high-density residential neighborhoods. Um, the proposed Lot One does currently have a dry shop constructed on it. In 2012, the building permit, um, received a zoning certificate from the planning department and a building permit that was approved. In both the 2000 and the 2022 zoning resolutions, we require a primary residence to be present on urban residential lots prior to the presence of an accessory structure such as a shop. However, since the applicant was permitted to build this, um, in 2012, staff has no objections to the vacation and replat due to the presence of the shop on Lot One. However, it is a non-conforming use, therefore, there is no extensions, enlargements, expansions of the shop that would be permitted without a residential structure being present moving The second criteria is whether the subdivision is conformance with general provisions, Chapter One, and subdivision design standards, Chapter Seven. And they do, this subdivision is in conformance with the general provisions of the 2013 Neutona County subdivision regulations. The applicant needed to provide evidence that sufficient water supply system and sewage disposal systems were established, and as the proposed CV Nelson addition major subdivision will be serviced through the Skyline Ranches District for Lot One and Westland Park District for Lot Two, where the historical relationships of those lots land, the applicant is not proposing any change. Number five is evidence to show all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards, or require special precautions have been identified by the applicant, and proposed use of the area is compatible with such conditions. The report from the Neutona County Conservation District, recommendations for the CV Nelson addition, is that development be overseen by professionals with the guidance of Neutona County. Their second, uh, concern is the body of water within the plat, and that care should be taken to minimize any excess erosion into the creek if there is any development on that lot. And any excess sediment in the natural drainage should be removed to prevent any potential, potential flooding. Um, but currently, there is no frequency of flooding or ponding in the area, but they would require that during development, care be taken to make sure that remains the case. Necessary services, including fire, police protection, schools, recreation, utilities, open space, transportation systems, are available to serve the proposed subdivision. It's with, currently within the Neutona County Sheriff's jurisdiction, there will be no change in, um, necessary services. Does the subdivision appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, not detrimental to the future development of the area, and not detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county? As the uses in the subdivision will remain urban residential, there is no detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area or the county, the zoning does not change. The requirement for documentation satisfactory to the Board of County Commissioners, that an improvement service district requirements have been met, they currently reside in improvement service districts, so that requirement is met. As well as, nine is adequate, adequate financial resources to develop. Um, as all the required services are in place, there is no financial guarantee required for this subdivision. Staff has received the following comments, road and bridge had no comment on this plat. The Neutona County Health Department comments, sorry, are that proposed Lot Two would be required to hook into the sewer line on Smoke Rise Road, which is in Westland Park ISD. There is no septic permit for the structure on Lot One, it is a dry shop. Distance from the existing sewer lines to Lot One may be further than the 300 foot, so hooking into public sewer may not be cost-effective. Um, aid facilities, planning area review would be necessary to determine the feasibility of hooking into a sewer line. Again, additionally, installation of a septic system on Lot One may not be possible due to the lot dimensions required setbacks from surface water and lot lines to existing easements. So, it'll just, Lot One will require some care and consideration for any potential future water service or sewer service. Skyline Ranch ISD had no comments for this plat. Um, Westland Park ISD, Edward Chase was in my office, uh, discussing this with me, uh, last week, and at that time, verbally stated that if Lot Two remained in Westland Park, he didn't see any issue, however, on October 5th, I received this email from him. As stated, the Westland Park Improvement Service District, based on your email dated September 18th, it appears the Nelsens are planning to vacate and replat of Lot 10, Westland Park Number Two, and Lot Two, Bunner Simple subdivision. Both of these lots are with the Westland, within the Westland Park Improvement and Service District, therefore, they cannot be vacated or split up. Both lots are currently owned by the Nelsens, and I see no need to have the lots vacated because the lots may be used as per their current location. The City of Casper Planning Department reviewed this plat and had no comment. As of the date of the staff report, um, staff had received, uh, one written comment that went into your packet and received a second. It says, attached are a list of neighbors in Westland Park, primarily on Smoke Rise Road, who are in opposition to the request by Carl and Vicky Nelson, known as MS 23-3, to vacate and replat Lot Two, Bunner Simple subdivision, and Lot 10, Westland Park Number Two. Main reasons include, the current CV Nelson addition has a design and feel that is inconsistent with the layout and integrity of Westland Park's original deed restriction covenants that the planned community in 1970s, a complete disregard for existing property lines and easements in the requested plat, potential financial impact to Westland Park should Nelson request to no longer support annual assessments after the replat, misinformation that the property is currently accessed from Cabin Creek Road, when it's actually accessed by Smoke Rise Road, potential for Bunner Simple Lot Two to become a new home site that would crowd existing lots and lower property values. People who have signed have expressed an interest in being present at the hearing, and I have taken the liberty to provide them copies of the notice sent to me by your office. I will submit my own opposition with specifics related to the property, boundaries, easements, infringements, and evidence in a separate email. We look forward to hearing on October 10th, and hope the planning department recognizes the desire of those on Smoke Rise and in Westland Park to preserve our community and the importance we feel in rejecting the request of Carl and Vicky Nelson in the MS 23-3 request. Additionally attached to that was those opposed, a statement of those opposed to the request by Carl and Vicky Nelson to vacate and replat lots Two, located at Lot 10, Westland Park, consisting of Westland Park Number Two and Lot Two, Bunner Simple subdivision, have signed below. Their reasons given are to remove those two lots from Westland Park subdivision would negatively impact the HOA budget by $10,000 every 20 years going forward based on this year's assessment. This would raise the assessment for each lot owner in the Westland Park subdivision and compromise future maintenance and improvement projects. Two, compromise easements for gas and electric utilities in the Westland Park subdivision. See evidence submitted where a large shop barn currently sits on a 30-foot road and utility easement in the CV Nelson subdivision that resulted in delays and increased costs for Black Hills infrastructure upgrades in the past five years. The Nelson request would subject the Westland Park subdivision to future home site development that is not consistent with original deed restriction covenants that protected the integrity and natural beauty of the Westland Park subdivision when it was established in the 1970s. This has the potential to lower the property values in Westland Park and create an inconsistent fill where Lot Two is accessed from Smoke Rise Road. Future home site development would be accessed from Smoke Rise Road. Carl has accessed this lot from Smoke Rise Road to remove structures with semi, low-boy trailer, mow grass, and perform routine maintenance on Lot Two. Excuse me. This continued access would degrade the roads and utility infrastructure in Westland Park without reasonably compensation that is currently assessed in the form of annual payments to the Westland Park Improvement Service District. Staff did send out notices to 20 neighbors. Staff's recommendation, staff proposes that the Planning and Zoning Commission enter a motion and vote to recommend approval or denial of the requested CV Nelson addition major subdivision. Should the Planning and Zoning Commission vote to approve the requested major subdivision, staff has no additional conditions for this project. Staff also recommends the motion incorporated by reference all findings of fact set forth. And I will stand for questions.
Questions for staff.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Christie, would, could you run through that email from Ed Chase again? Please, thank you.
You want me to read it again? Or just, um, he has an opposition for the planning to vacate and replat these two lots, as the belief was within Westland Park Improvement Service District, that, um, both of the lots were within that district. The data that we have shows Lot One being within Skyline Ranch Improvement Service District, and so if you look at the plat, the plat will state that Lot One will stay within Skyline Ranches, and Lot Two will stay within Westland Park.
So, someone was mistaken, is that what I'm gathering?
I believe so.
Okay. So, the whole deal about, number one, excuse me, button into your time. What part does the county play in, um, refereeing rival improvement service districts? Anything?
No, sir.
Okay. And as it's proposed, what's in, um, Skyline and what's in, um, Westland Park will remain the same, just different lot lines?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's my understanding from the maps.
Mr. Chairman, um, there would be a change if the lot line moved, then there's a little, the lot in Westland would be a little smaller, right? Right now, it'd be, it would be less area.
Yes, Mr.
But there's still two lots, and one's in...
Mr. Chair, that, that is correct.
Okay. Robert, question?
Not at this time.
Another question, does the existing shop that apparently, uh, was missed back in 2012, does that have water and sewer to it?
No, Mr. Chair, that is a dry structure.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the, the lot that's sitting in Westland Park, um, if, it, it remains in Westland Park, so it, it must, um, conform to their covenants, is that, is that correct? With the replat?
Mr. Chair, um, if there, if there were covenants in place, then it would need to be, but covenants have not been provided to staff, um, and there was a statement made that they have expired.
But it's still part of the Improvement Services District, Westland Park, correct?
It would, yes, sir, it would still be in part of the Improvement Service District.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for staff? All right, would the applicants like to come? Fill us in on, uh, any details we may be overlooking? Fill us in on any details we may be overlooking?
Good evening, Bill Ferenger with CEPI, 680 Enterprise Drive, here to speak on this project. The owner, Mr. Nelson, is in the audience if he needs to answer some questions also. First off, I guess I would like to ask Christie if I could get a copy of those two documents that you submitted here, because I never saw them. So we've not seen those, so we're not really sure what, what the statements are for all of those. We've had, we split these lots, or these two lots have been subdivided in accordance with following the creek line, because you really can't get across from one side to the other, and running the lot line down that creek is, seems to be a good way to keep from disturbing that creek and having too much, too much issue with that creek. So we've contacted both Improvement Service Districts, Westland Park and Skyline. To our knowledge, we had no issues with either one of them. I know I spoke personally with the president of the Skyline Ranches Improvement Service District. He said that whatever happens with Lot 1, they're perfectly fine with, so they have no, no concern. I was thinking that the Western Park had no issue until I think I heard the email that was presented tonight. But I think we kind of cleared that up in the fact that we have two service improvement districts here, and, and nothing is really changing between them. They're not, neither of them is losing a service, and so everything's going to stay the same as far as they, they have to maintain. Some of the other concerns that were listed in the, in the letter, that's in the packet, except I'm not sure what all the other ones were that were read here tonight, but some of the concerns that were in the, the letter from Mr. Hasten, oh, thank you. Can be addressed pretty easily. The first point makes that, or states that there's a, that the replat moves his property line and ignores a utility easement, but we've not done anything with, with his property line. We actually found the original monuments that were set for that property line that the EPI surveyed and platted back in 2012 and 2014. So there's, there's no change in that, on his property lines. Some of the other ones, the, it ignores his intent to purchase the lot. That, I think, is between him and the current owner, if, if they want to work that out. The request would permanently allow Nelson's grandkids to use the replat as an ATV off-road park. I guess there's, Mr. Nelson's grandkids have driven an ATV around. It's, it's their lot. It doesn't have any, any tracks or roads or anything like that to show that it's been excessive, but I think that has been taken care of. Allow for future dumping of junk. You go out there and take a look, looks like Mr. Nelson's property is pretty, pretty neat, pretty well-kept. He's got some, you know, some trailers out there, he's got some racks out there with some other stuff, but it's not like he's, they're parking used cars and everything else out there. He keeps it pretty, he keeps it mowed down, and he keeps it, you know, things in pretty good order. Would, would subject our community to a new home site, and that would be inconsistent with the community as planned in, in the 70s. There's always been a residential lot planted in that location, so I don't see that that's changing anything in the community. It will remain a residential lot and for purchase or development by anyone else. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them, or we can have Mr. Nelson answer.
Questions for Mr. Ferenger. Seeing none? Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'd like to have the opportunity to come back and address some of the other comments.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into the public hearing. Part of this consideration? This is to open the public hearing for MS Major Subdivision 23-3, and that is for the C.V. Nelson addition. So again, I'm going to reiterate, please hold your, any information you want to have us consider, down to three minutes. And at this time, anyone wishing to speak in favor, would you please come forward and, and address the commission?
Good evening. I'm Carl Nelson, 4252 Cabin Creek Road. I'd like to go back and explain to you how these properties got divided, if I may. When Bunner had that house that belongs to Matt, he also had the horse property all the way around it back then. They were, his wife got sick, they had to go to a one-level house, they moved. The house went into default, set empty for a good portion, couple of years, maybe three years, and they couldn't sell it, so I offered the realtor to buy those other two lots so they could get a short sale through on the home and get it actually vacated or somebody to live there. As far as what they said about utilities in their letter, the water main for Skyline Ranches, can, can you pull up my shop again, please? I'll try to make this brief for you. Well, I didn't know I had control of that. If you look at the right side of the shop there, that yellow line, inside that 30-foot easement there between my shop and Xeros Place is a water main for Skyline Ranches. On the other endode at the bottom of the page there is your utility easements for Black Hills. There was some concern there about Black Hills being able to access that property and costing them extra days or time. That is untrue. Right there on the corner of the bottom page on the right is where Black Hills does have their, their, their gas line, and it goes across to Skyline Ranches. So that is not an issue. The sewer, I'm not sure where that goes through, but I don't even know if the two are connected. As far as the use of my shop goes, that is dry storage. I keep my pontoon boat in there, my, my bobcat for plowing snow and mowing weeds. And I do mow the green area on both sides. Next to Matt over there, I mow that down. I, I feel we have a rattlesnake problem out in that area, and if you keep the grass mowed down, you know kids get bit, so.
Mr. Nelson, we'll have to ask you to hurry up, because we'd like to keep it down to the three minutes.
Well, I really don't have any, any other thing to say. I, I think it's a good deal for most, both neighborhoods. I see no reason why it shouldn't be approved, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Nelson? I do have one question. When you first addressed this, you were talking about the house and the house that vacant, does that show up here, or were we talking about a house?
Yeah, right where it says Smoke Rise Road, that driveway up there.
Okay. Not, not on the property we're talking about, not on the...
No, that was a lot in of itself, and then they had this other lot around here that I bought so they could complete their short sale.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
It has nothing, really it has nothing, that's just background information, it has nothing to do with the boundaries of the proposed...
No, I'm just explaining how I acquired that property and why.
I got you, thank you.
You good?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of MS 23-3, C.V. Nelson, Major Subdivision? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of? Seeing none. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to Major Subdivision 23-3, the C.V. Nelson, proposed C.V. Nelson subdivision? Please go forward.
Good evening. My name is Matt Hasten. I'm at 4347 Smoke Rise Road, and I do speak in opposition to the application. It would subject our neighborhood to a small lot comparable to most, and it is currently listed for a future home site, which would tax the sewer system of Westland Park without due compensation. So I would like to formally request that the replat not be approved, that it would stay as it is with the Bunner lot being what it is right now. That would give a future homeowner or future neighbor of mine a full acre instead of just a half acre that would be cut off and tight by the creek. This would, obviously, they could put a pedestrian bridge across and access the backside of that lot on the Cabin Creek side for, you know, if they wanted to put in a garden or something like that, assuming that this future home site was approved and that it was developed that way. That's most of my opposition personally, is that the future home site would crowd my neighbors to the south and myself. It would also allow for a new home to be built, which would be inconsistent with the feel and the spread-out nature of the existing plat as it is currently. I don't have any further, any further comments. I don't know if there's any questions, but my neighbors on Smoke Rise and in Westland Park have joined me this evening. Some of them have signed a petition that this be opposed. Most of it was from the respect of keeping our properties the way that they are currently plat and keeping the consistent feel and integrity of Westland Park as it's currently
Questions for Mr. Hasten?
Mr. Chair, one question. That ravine that runs through the backside of that, has anybody built over that, or...
I actually maintain access to the Cabin Creek side on my property. I've gone through and weeded away that I can get across the creek without any issues.
You can get across it?
Yes, sir. I can get across and...
Like on foot, or how?
Foot. I've taken a four-wheeler across the creek. There's a water crossing in my backyard that I can go through if need be to access the Cabin Creek side from Smoke Rise.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I guess I'm confused. Can you tell us what's going on with this comment that maybe you want to buy the property?
I have in the past offered to buy the property as it's plat with the Bunner Simple, the whole acre and not just half of an acre. And I believe some of my neighbors have also offered to buy it as it is rather than replat. The idea would be to keep the space green and not improve with the home site or future And I would say in regards with the satellite picture that we've got here, you can see on that satellite picture where they do make a U-turn on that southern end of the property, where they have used that as a four-wheel off-road use type of, you know, causing dust. I can, if need be, I can provide video evidence of what they've been doing. So, but I will, I'll point real quick to... In this spot right here, you can see where he comes around, makes his point, comes back through here, comes back up, and they run dirt bikes, four-wheelers, all through here. In the summer months, that becomes a problem because we have to deal with the dust and the noise and everything else that Carl and his grandkids currently use the property for. If it were to be sold, like they're intending to sell right now, they've, they've actually got this listed on a website, real estate website, as it would already be approved as this major subdivision has already gone through. They could continue to use that land as they have been, where they would be running ATVs, dirt bikes, and such as they see fit, so. And I, I understand they are more than, you know, allowed to do that, they own the land, but it's one of those things where we would, in Westland Park, like to see them refrain from creating a bunch of dust in summer months, and if they were to be denied the replat and they sell that land, it would go to, let's say, a future home site where, you know, a future neighbor would have a whole acre instead of just a half an acre, so. And it would most likely have access across the creek, you know, if someone develops that, you know, they would want to have that full acre instead of just a half of an acre.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Would you please come forward?
My name is Joe Salverson. I live at 6508 Westland Road, and I am on the Joint Powers Board for the Red Butte Westland Park Sewer System. We're tasked with ownership, maintaining, and operating the sewer system. I just learned recently about this. I didn't know what was, what was going on. I came to gain some knowledge. I live, I don't live on Smoke Rise, but I live about a quarter-mile down the road, and I am a little concerned with, with the, if the intent, I don't know what the intent of this subdivision is. I don't know, I've heard that expressed. If it is to create a half-acre home lot alongside Smoke Rise, that doesn't fit in real well with the way the thing was plotted in the 70s. There hasn't been a house on that lot for the last, you know, 50, 60 years. It's been an open space, been horses grazing land or whatever. Cutting that down into a small parcel like that and then trying to fit a house on it is going to be, I think would change the, the curb appeal, if you will, of that, along that road. And the sewer line in that, along that property, if I'm not mistaken, I, I don't know the depth of it, I guess I, but it's up against the road, and that property all lies, it's down gradient from the road towards the creek. It's quite a bit lower than the road. If we were required to provide sewer service to that, that might require quite a bit of engineering, and maybe, maybe the installation of a lift station. And we've got, I think we've got 16 or 17 properties out there now that currently have pumps and lift stations, and they are problematic. That's where we spend most of our, of our budget on maintaining the sewer line is taking care of these pumps, and I, if, if the thing can be designed to drain gravity, that would be one thing, but I think it's going to be, it's going to create a hardship either for the district or, or the homeowner if they're going to try and, try to get sewer out off of that property. So I would, I would say that it's, it's not, not an ideal home site from a couple of different perspectives, and I would not be in favor of creating that, that lot.
Questions for Mr. Salverson?
Just one quick question.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. In regard to the sewer issue, does it change if that lot line moves or stays where it
What, does what change?
The concern you have about the sewer system.
No, the lot line doesn't affect the, the difficult access to the sewer, the fact that that property hasn't had a residence on it. The fact that that property hasn't had a residence on it, sewer was put in. I'm not certain if that property, if that sewer line is designed to handle residential sewer from that lot. It was designed, you know, later after the subdivision was done in the 70s, the sewer was done later to access the houses that were constructed. And that has been a vacant property all that time. So, the lot line would not affect the, the difficult, the cost of putting a sewer line there, the fact that we would have to put sewer there when there had not been any there. That's, that's the change, if you will.
Question, Joe.
Yes, sir.
What obligation does your improvements, or does your wastewater have with these, say, septic tank effluent pump? Or you guys, you guys accept responsibility at the main, so the service line and all that is on the property owner, right?
No, sir. I wished it was, but it's, uh-
In town, it is that way.
What's that?
In town, it's that way.
Uh, yeah, and this, this is not that way. We, we have electrical service and grinder pumps on the private properties, and when those things go down, our operators have to go in there and-
For multiple, for multiple lots or, or just-
Individual lots. Individual lots. There's 16 or 17, and Ed probably has a better handle on that than I do. Yeah, it's, it's, uh-
Okay.
And in the wintertime, when things freeze up and stuff. So, yeah, that's, we maintain those. We provide the hardware, if you will, the equipment on those individual lots to get the sewage up into the, to the gravity portion of the main.
Any other questions for Mr. Salverson? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you verify that Mr. McNutt has asked his question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I had the same question that Ray did as far as the sewer line, that it really isn't a matter of whether or not that lot is replatted. It's just, it's, that's the issue regardless of, you know, whether it's a half-acre lot or the original lot. I just wanted to confirm that. So that was, that was all.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Chase?
My name's Edward E. Chase. I reside at 6702 Terrace Drive, Casper, Wyoming, 82604. The properties that we're talking about all reside in Westland Park Number Two, which was annexed into the city back in August 1 of 1974. Later on, a improvement and service district was then established for the four subdivisions that are out there. There's Jade Hills, Westland Park, Westland Park Number Two, Westland Park Number Three. All of the land within each of these subdivisions all became part of the improvement and service district. It is my opinion that the design of the subdivision Number Two, Westland Number Two, has remained the same since 1974. And I see no reason why we need to vacate any lot, but in fact, the owners own the land already, and they can do already what they want to do with it, according to court or county requirements. I don't see any need that they need to be changing the lot as such. The system of, are as Joe talked about. I'm on the sewer board too. And so, the sewer will, and this lot, if it were to become a home, will probably have to have a lift station or some kind of a pump for it. But that's not, that's the owner's problem to take care of that, if in fact a home's going to be built. Well, in my opinion, that the lot cut in half, that's to remain in whole because of the improvement and service district. Because the one half they're wanting to put in the guideline, sub improvement and service district, it's already part of ours. And that's the ownership. It's never been changed. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Chase? Thank you, Ed. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the C.V. Nelson subdivision? Would you please come forward?
Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Joe Proud, 4473 Smoke Rise Road, Casper, Wyoming. I had hoped to learn a lot of information here this evening, and I had before coming up on commenting, but right now I'm a little bit more confused than I was when I got here. I can't quite understand why someone is selling this property but is coming to you folks to have the property changed. That just doesn't make sense to me. It looks like if the property lines are changed as he requires them or is asking them to change, it's going to make the lot harder to sell. Now, this lot is on a stream incline, you have to see it. These pictures don't do it justice. Right now, I don't think you could build a house on the lot without extensive excavation, dirt fill, et cetera. So anyway, I am opposed to making this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Would you please come forward?
My name is Rebecca Lawhorn. I live at 4301 Smoke Rise Road. My concern is my house is directly behind the C.V. Nelson subdivision. And what you're seeing in that picture doesn't show you the buildings that are actually sitting on our easement and that I have piles of wood and two old, oh, I can't, wheelbarrows upside down along the side of my fence piled up. He says he's concerned about rattlesnakes. Well, wood piles are a good place for them. And that debris from that actually falls down into Cabin Creek. And pictures were sent. I don't know why they're not up. Pictures were sent showing PVC pipe falling down into Cabin Creek, along with some brick with masonry attached to it, falling down into Cabin Creek. And this rests right along the side of my fence. When I moved into Westland Park, I had a beautiful view. Carl has a really high wall that blocks his view of that side, and on the other side of his wall is beautiful. But my view is of barns and stacks of wood and debris, old cars. And on the other side, for my other neighbor, their view is a giant barn with an empty trailer with a big advertisement for Kawasaki on the side of it. So, my concern is then, what's going to happen to the next property, next door to all of us? What's going to go on that property? What stops him from using that for the next alleyway? I am opposed.
Questions for Ms. Lawhorn?
Yes.
Lawhorn, correct?
Yes.
Questions?
I just have one quick question, just to orient myself. Is that your round pin? Is that where your residence is located on the map?
It is not.
Might be looking at-
It is not. You can see the top of a very small red barn. That is my chicken coop. And the creek flows between us.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Anyone else in the- Hello?
Judy Centenino, 4474 Smoke Rise. Your aerial view picture does not show the topography of that drainage. That lot went up for sale, had a sold sign up for a few days at about $100,000, I don't know. Wasn't very many days before that sign was taken down. It is not a buildable lot. It had a horse barn on it before. You might put a small home where the horse barn was. It is steep. I understand what they're saying about putting, having to pump the sewage up to the waistline. The topography on the other side, it's not buildable. He's pushed down dirt or whatever down here to that triangular shape. It is not buildable. If they were to drag in dirt, fill, whatever, that would be interfering with the natural drainage. I don't know what's going on with what's going to happen with that. I mean, four-wheelers and stuff like that, we live part-time in Arizona, and they just tear the hell out of the environment around. That's what four-wheelers do. So I don't know what- There's, that is not a building site. And I have a feeling that someone architecturally probably looked at that. Somebody was buying that sight unseen, and it got pointed out to that person that it's not buildable. And that's my point. I've driven by that for 20 years. There was a horse barn on it for a reason. There was a horse barn. It's not buildable. He's put that over there. That's the only buildable site on all of that property. That's drainage, and it's steep. So, is somebody going to build part of a house on this side and part of a house on that and do a, you know, some fancy Frank Lloyd Wright house on it? I don't know how you could build anything but. And it's not a drainage that flows often, but I can tell you, people back there who already have sewer lift problems, if it were to flood, they're going to have backup in their houses if somebody were to do something with that lot. It's not buildable. But I'm just a person that drives by it for 20 years. It's just not buildable. So I don't know who's trying to get away with what. To sell that is a buildable lot. It's got a for-sale sign on it. It said sold, sold sign came down right away. It's not buildable. Not for anything but a tiny home. That's my opinion.
Questions for Ms. Centenino?
Yes, nice Irish name, yes.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Tiffany Haston. I live at 4347 Smoke Rise Road. I apologize for my voice. I have some bronchitis that's getting, I'm getting over. So I live right next door to the empty lot, and the roadway, Carl has never accessed it from Cabin Creek Road. He always comes and uses our road. He'll bring heavy equipment through there. He pulled the barn off of there after we had a ton of foxes that were getting in our neighborhood and had been left vacant for several years there prior to Mr. Nelson finally moving it. So, the road is often used by Carl. The back area of the, if you notice, yes, he, he is always on his, his bobcat. We always say he's in reverse because he's always pushing dirt. He actually has made that dirt plane up there elevated, so there's stuff that is falling into our backyard. We do have pictures of that that are falling down into the creek. So, he does have a little bit of a problem with that. Also, he has boundary issues. He's often on our property even though he doesn't know it. And he kind of just feels like he rules the roost with that. But also the integrity of our, of our neighborhood. We have these beautiful big lots. Each home is made to look a certain way, and if this lot was divided, really, you would only have an ability to put a small, small home on that. It would reduce our values for each and everyone, each of our houses, especially if someone decided, well, I can't build a home, so I'm just going to pull in a mobile home. Or maybe I'm going to just pull in my RV and let it sit there and live there. So it would definitely decrease our property values. The creek often does flood. This year, when we had the rains this year, the creek was swollen. It was huge, and we do have pictures of that as well. So to say that it's kind of not a non-issue is kind of silly. It is actually, can be a big issue. As far as the, I have two sons. I've watched their kids often ride around in cars, circularing around the thing, as well as in ATVs and dirt bikes. My young sons, I often worry about seeing an accident because I know it's going to happen at some point in time. And my concern is that even if he divides these lots, who's going to hold the people who own those lots to any type of rules and regulations? If he doesn't even own, hold his own subdivision to regulations, then what's to stop him from creating, you know, no rules for the people who live there? Or him building a multifamily structure, which would severely impact everything around us, as well as our road? And he uses our road, we pay for our road, and we wouldn't want someone to continue if he built access to come and use our roads and degrade them further. So, anyways.
Question, question for Ms. Haston? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Would you please come forward? Anybody else? Seeing none? Into the public hearing? Open the case up for discussion, and the chair would entertain a, oh, I'm sorry.
Could I just say a couple more things?
Sure, sure.
I'm sorry.
I overlooked your chance to rebut.
Just to come around a couple of items, there is, you guys have probably driven by that lot out there, and it is, drops down off the road there. It makes for a good facility, the residents, to have a nice walkout basement. Main level could be at the floor, the street level. As far as addressing the sewer, there's a couple of different ways to take care of that, and that would be, you know, they're right, they do have a number of pump systems that in their, their district already that could be one of those. Another issue or another item to take care of that would be to just have a pump inside the house that picks up any sewage from the basement, pumps it to the upstairs level, and then that runs out by gravity. That, that is not uncommon. So, the sewer, the sewer is not a, not really an issue that would be very difficult to take care of. But like I said, you know, the lot itself, it lends to a nice house with a walkout basement out to the creek. And some of the other, some of the other issues there about some of the stuff in the creek and stuff that Becky was talking about, that's north of this property that's being replatted. It's not, not even abutting where this property is at. That's on his home site, Carl Nelson's home site, not anything to do with this down in here. So, um, I think that's really about all I needed, I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, so we've had the public hearing. We've heard from the, we've heard from the public. Discussion and the chair would entertain a motion for consideration of the application. Anything?
I would just ask that the planners go out and take a look at that again. This evening, the topography.
Thank you. Thank you. Robert, you look like you were about to say something.
I live right next to it and I don't understand why it needs to be replanted.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I guess I would have the same question. I understand how that would improve one lot, but it's somewhat detrimental to the other one. I did drive by that and it is, it's, it's pretty close to that creek that runs through the back. And comments were made that you wouldn't be able to build under that property, but that I wouldn't want to build on it, but somebody else did to the right of it. I mean, it, there's a house that's 20 feet from the road. If you go just to the right of that on that Smoke Rise Road, it's built pretty tight to the road in an interesting way. But I suppose it's doable. I'm not sure. It changes, if that lot line stays or goes away, I'm not sure it changes the building site. But I do understand the neighborhood's desire to keep all of the lots at, at a one acre in size.
Do we have a motion?
I move to deny MS 23-3 because the major subdivision does not meet the general standards required for the approval and incorporate by reference all findings of fact set forth.
What did he just say? You can't hear him.
I'm sorry. I move to deny MS 22, 23-3 because the major subdivision does not meet the general standards required for approval and incorporate by reference all findings of facts set forth. Is that okay?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? I will be voting, um, in opposition to the, uh, motion. I believe that, uh, one of those that's high, that, um, if you have property, you should be able to, uh, do with your property as you please, as long as it meets certain standards. And I don't believe that, uh, basically if, if someone doesn't want, um, doesn't want this, um, re-subdivision, they should make the owner an offer he can't refuse. So that's where I come from.
May I say something?
No. So, um, we have a motion and a second? Ready to call a question? Chad? You good?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm ready.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. All in favor of the motion to deny MS 23-3? Signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Aye. So I count three to one.
Did Chad vote?
I heard aye. You voted aye for denying, correct Chad?
I did.
Okay. So I count three to one. Okay. Next on the agenda, uh, public comment. Now, if anyone would like to come up and address the board, you're welcome to do so. Yes.
Evening commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I do appreciate your time tonight. I do apologize, I was unaware of this meeting until about three o'clock this afternoon. And so I didn't have time to prepare some documents so they can scan them and, you know, just try to point them out. My name is Bradley Moore. I am a Casper native and I have a son, uh, who's enlisted in the Air Force and is currently in South Korea. So I am representing him tonight for his interest. His interest is purchasing five acres of land up on Casper Mountain off of Eureka Road. And also, uh, I've been working with Christie for about three months in trying to get some, uh, direction in, in purchasing this problem. But, but we have, all but one landowner has agreed to, uh, write a legal document to get legal access to the property that he wishes to buy. But he's got one, one person, his name is Ted Brown. He's an older gentleman in our, uh, community. But he's, he says that he's let people go through there for 20 years. But he's not willing to give written authorization to make it a permanent access. So, um, I've been working with Christie a little bit and seeing what alternatives we could do here. It's myself, as well as my friends, they only have, or Mr. Brown only has a small section of that road that, that blocks, blocks easement into the, into the red box where it's, uh, that's what's for sale. And that's what my son wants to purchase. So, um, I guess, I've talked to the realtor this afternoon and the owner of the land has talked with Mr. Brown and they have reduced the cost of the property by about $10,000 down to $100,000. But still, in, in my eyes, when you invest that much money, something could happen, not only with the current owner, but down the road, if he decides to sell, they could block that access. There's $100,000 gone. So I think that's a priority for myself and Chris, that we get permanent access into that. Now, the other situation that I was not familiar with until about 10 minutes after 5:00 tonight, and Christie's unaware of this too, but one of her assistants in her office gave me these documents indicating that in the 21st day of October of 2021, there was a permanent easement gone, gone through the adjacent property. And it would go right neck, go right up to the eastern or western border of my son's interest property. So I, I guess I'm looking for you folks to give me an appropriate direction, if we should pursue working with Mr. Brown? Or if we should take a look at finding out who this landowner is here, since he's already got a permanent easement? Can we extend that out? And the other positive thing about that is that on the eastern side of the border, there's a power line road and it's got an easement as well for servicing that, that area. So, um, I'm just trying to help out my son because this is property that he would really like to have. Being in the Air Force, he wants to own a part of Wyoming, even though it's only five acres. It's, it's beautiful property and it would be able to have something built on it to improve the, the environment and making living quarters. And I have spoken with the Health Department indicating that, uh, he feels that a sewer, sewer system or septic tank could be put in this particular location. So the health aspect is pretty positive on this as well. So I, I do appreciate everyone's after evening. And I'm just looking for some directions, if I can continue to work with Christie on this alternative, uh, with the permanent easement in there, or what are my options?
If I could add, I'm in your same shoes with an issue down in Louisiana. We have property that we've had for 50 years and it was, it's probably 100 years that this lane has been used. And, uh, the property is, there's been some development around it. And so there's new interest in the property and, uh, come to find out, you know, we, we hear about prescriptive easements and things like that. What we didn't know is that all costs a lot of money. Lawyers, um, I never thought of going to the Planning and Zoning Commission asking about an easement. But, uh, basically everything I'm hearing from the lawyer is, uh, again, make the guy an offer and, um, hopefully it floats. If not, you might have to ask him more. And if you want to basically condemn the property, you have to go to court, pay the lawyers and it gets expensive. So I understand where you're coming from. I wish there was an easier way, I'm not aware of one.
One, one other comment I neglected to make. Apparently, all the other landlords, other than this Ted Brown, said that they would give written authorization to make that a permanent easement.
Don't offer you much, it's a can of worms.
I know.
You pay the guy more, if you pay him what he wants, I'm sure he'll give you an easement, but, that gets expensive in a hurry, as you know.
I know that additional easement isn't very much, but I, I think it would probably be better to, to approach him in the cost of that additional easement versus trying to fight the current landowner.
Good luck. I, I don't know what to tell you.
Well, the, the realtor has told me that, uh, within two days, when that property went on sale, they had a buyer for it. But when there was restricted access, they would do it just like that.
Just like you're talking about, a guy can go out there and put an iron gate up there and nothing you can do about it.
Exactly right.
Other than go argue it in court that it was been used for a thoroughfare for all these years and therefore there's some prescriptive right to it. You have to satisfy the judge. Hopefully that works.
So I have no clue on what lawyer fees would be for something of that nature.
I tell you right now, the one I'm paying is $200 an hour.
But is that a local lawyer?
No, no, this is in Louisiana.
Okay. I don't, I don't even know how much they charge for things like that here in Casper.
A 15-minute phone call is.
Would you have any recommendations for a lawyer?
And how I got mine was just called around. And I got sent to like three, four different places and finally I got one that stuck and crossing my fingers. So, same boat you are.
Well, once again, I appreciate all your time. It's been a long time since I've been up here in front of a speaker.
Fine.
I, I am a Casper native and worked here for a lot, three or four different companies and.
Thank you for your son's service.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. He's, he's getting anxious for January, he's getting transferred to Guam.
Oh. Beautiful Guam, huh?
Okay. Well, thank you all, once again. I might touch base with you again, Christie, if you don't mind. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, Christie's got, what, I'm sorry. Christie's got to talk about training.
All right, so communication from staff. YO Pass is happening basically all day on the 19th and a half-day on the 20th. And is anybody interested? I can swing funds out of my budget for a couple.
I'm interested. 19th and 20th?
So the, um, the YO Pass evening social would start at 6:30 on the 18th after our planned training. And then the full actual activity training is the 19th. And then there's a breakout on the 20th between city and county. So we would be sitting with just other county folks talking about county problems. And, and sharing ideas. So, and that'll be at the Ag Center?
Is that where the social is also?
No, I will give you the, um, details for the social. You'll be out of town. So I have Hal. And Ray. And Chad.
I would like to attend the social. I, I can't make the, uh, the actual, uh, meeting on the 19th and 20th though.
Okay. I will put you on for the social then, on, after our training.
Great.
That, that brings me to our training on the 18th, um, at 5:00 PM, uh, across the hall in the Development Department Conference Room, where we will continue covering, um, the training for a Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
You said 5:00?
5:00. Yes, sir.
Are you going to register for that?
Yes, I will have you guys registered for the conference. I may.
All day Thursday, like 8:00 to 5:00?
8:00 to 5:00.
And then Friday morning?
Friday from 8:00 to noon. And the confirmations will use the email I have on file for you and the confirmations will come to that email.
Anything else? Anything else this evening?
No, sir.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, one, I'm sorry, there is one more thing. Uh, November 14th, I will actually be, it's almost certain I won't be here in time to make the meeting.
I do not believe we have anything for the meeting on the 14th.
Okay, even better.
So, can I, do you, do we automatically put all agenda items into December then?
Correct, there's, they have no agenda items for the 14th.
So I can stay?
Yes, sir.
We're safe right now.
Yep.
It's, it's a done deal, it's not going to be, no meeting on the 14th.
I received no applications at the end of September.
That was a deadline, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. We had a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we are adjourned at 7:41 PM.